Welcome to the Milford Planning Board of June 4, 2024. A pleasure to the board for the meeting minutes.
You have approval?
They're moved.
Well, second.
Moved in second for the approval of the minutes of the last meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The unanimous of five. You don't have any one piece?
Do you want to waste a minute? I can tell you about the schedule.
Go ahead.
Our next meeting is the 18th of this month with the, it's a joint meeting with the ad hoc competency plan committee. MAPC is going to be here for another presentation, but they're not going to be able to be here in July at all. So our regular meeting is normally in the middle of July. You only meet once. So that'll be July 6th. And that would be the date that...
Sixteenth later?
The sixteenth. So this...
Six isn't very much in the middle.
I won't be here.
So that's a meeting that's available for the hearing to be continued to. And then in August, again, we'll only meet once in August. That's on the 13th. But the, it'll be a joint meeting with the ad hoc committee on the plan because the consultants are intending on being here for the August 13th meeting.
August 13th, you said?
Yep.
Sixteen and thirteen?
Yep. So now it's 7:02.
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing.
So moved? Open the public hearing?
Yeah, we did. He just called.
It's already open?
Yeah. There's continued public hearing, the application of Route 85 Realty Corp. for special permit approval regarding construction of 191,700 square foot wholesale facility and associated off-street parking on 116.87 acres of undeveloped property located on the westerly side of East Main Street, southwest of Wildwood Drive, known and numbered as Zero East Main Street, Cessers Map 30, Block Zero, Lot 34, BP zoning district.
Gentlemen, who is yours?
Good evening. For the record, Joseph Antonellis, attorney for the applicant, appreciate the opportunity to make, continue our presentation before the board tonight. When we were last before you, I think we spent some time discussing the overall site plan, the location of the building, the ditch improvements for drainage, parking, et cetera, where they'd be located, and the general aspects of the plan. We also had some discussion regarding the traffic patterns that are associated with this particular use. And I believe that your traffic peer review consultant has made some additional comments, and we've had the opportunity to review those comments, and our traffic engineer is here tonight to address those with you. I don't think that we have too much more to present to you tonight in regards to new information. I will tell you that I know you're concerned, as at this point, we still have not yet identified a tenant. The property is being actively marketed for the particular purpose that the special permit will be granted. We'd like to move forward with, we're going to move forward with that attempt during the interim period here while we seek your approval. And then I would also like to make certain that we leave tonight knowing whether any members of the board had any particular concerns about the layout and the site plan aspects of the special permit. And then I would anticipate that we would request to come back and make another presentation to you on July 16th. So if I, if I can, Mr. Chairman, I will turn it over to our traffic consultant to address the peer review issues that have come up. And obviously, if you have any questions, feel free to direct them to him, and I'll stand by and await your direction on what we might do next. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jason Adams with Bowman Consulting. We have received the response to our most recent April letter. In our read-through, we feel as though all of the issues that had been raised have been closed satisfactorily. I'm not sure if your peer review consultant is here and wants to.
She is.
Yeah. But to our, to our read-through the letter, there are no further outstanding comments on, on the traffic, with the conclusion continuing to be that the project would not have a notable impact on the surrounding roadways, intersections, and the safety of those. So I would defer to the board if you'd like to ask me questions or hear from your consultant.
If you want to get into, I mean, I had this discussion with Larry. The overriding, you know, I took a look through, I also looked at consultant, our consultant's comments, the overriding issue of all of this is that there's a significant assumption as to who this person is and where they would be coming with traffic. So there's an assumption that the traffic is going to be divided through Fortune Boulevard through 109, some number. We have no idea. There's a possibility that this, whoever this may be, may be, may produce almost all of their traffic from Fortune Boulevard or 109, depending on what they, where they come from or not. And that's something that we don't have. So I talked to Larry about this, and this does come up in the consultant's comments and part of what they had reviewed, that it's part of the notice of decision, should we go down that far, that it's my feeling that, one, this needs to be a special permit for a specific use, and that when, when we finally know who the person is, they're going to need to come back and either, yes, verify that the numbers that were assumed are correct or not, and then do whatever needs to be done to make them work. But that, you know, as I started to think about it, and I had a discussion with Larry about it, is the next person that comes in could be totally different. So to me, this is a special permit. It will be a special permit when we finally issue it for a specific vendor. It can't be, it can't be, once you have it, that's it. That's why we have a special permit, and it's going to be given based on whoever this person is or not, because we have no way of controlling that if we move forward. So I think that that, that would have to be put in as part of the record of decision. And it was, it was something that Larry and I had taken a crack at as part of that. So in terms of the traffic report, that's my comment on it. Yeah, in general, I don't have any, I didn't have any other comments other than what the consultant came up with, and I believe, you know, that I was, I was comfortable with the back and forth between the consultant and the proponent in terms of what was put in or not. And based on what the assumptions are, I agree with the endpoint, but those assumptions are, can change depending on who we're dealing with. So in terms of traffic, those are my comments. I had some other comments. We'll get to those as we move forward.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how best to word my question. So may I make sure that I'm understanding you correctly, Joe, that if this is in fact a, or any, let's generic, any proposal, if it really is being developed on speculation, which is permissible, what, what would we do then? What would you suggest we would have to do then? If you feel that...
Well, that's the question. The question that you asked may be, maybe a question that was one of the other comments that this board needs to determine, as to, do we do this where we allow speculation with it being a special permit or not? That's, that's another question. The traffic analysis was done based on the usage of a wholesaling, that size building creating this much traffic. They took that traffic and then they said, okay, it's going to go predominantly towards 495, one way or another. It's either going to go on Fortune Boulevard, or it's going to go on one, oh, to Beaver Street down to, down to 109. If, if this vendor receives all of their stuff from south of Milford, almost all of that traffic is going to come in on 109. It's not going to come down Fortune Boulevard. So there had to be an assumption made that is, that is, doesn't pay any attention to who the person is. It says, okay, maybe, and I forget the exact number, so I'm going to use 50/50. The 50% is going to go to Fortune Boulevard, 50% is going to be on 109. That may or may not be true. And until you know who the vendor is, where they're getting materials, where the people, where it's going to leave from, where they're going, and you have a better idea, that may change somewhat. Do I think that that's going to change and cause us to have to put in two new lanes on, behind 16? No, I don't think so. There isn't that much traffic here, but it, we do need to have control over those traffic signals and what that traffic may or may not do. And that's, that's sort of what I'm saying, and that continues to go through, to me, that continues to go through as any special permit as we move forward.
Probably a bond like we did with National, National Street.
Well, I, I, as we, I mean, as we do with simplest form, as we do with in-house unit in a single-family house, that, that isn't permanent. That goes with, with the people that are there. This, this isn't a permanent approval. This is a, if you come back with a different person, XYZ is, finally gets in, and XYZ is the one that comes through when we finally know, and they say, yep, the traffic analysis they gave us is 100% correct what they gave us. 10 years from now, five years from now, ABC comes in. ABC could have a totally different traffic outlook, and we have, at least to the, to me, at least to the extent that obviously 10 years from now, traffic's going to be different, at least to the amount of change in the traffic that's attributable to the two vendors, the two different vendors, we should at least take a look at that and evaluate that as to whether that has an impact on the traffic signals in Milford. That's, that's where I was going.
Part of the, part of the decision should be a recall if there's a change of...
Any, any different, any different vendor, they have to come back to us for, and Larry and I tried to work through some language. I don't know if that's to Attorney Antonellis or not, but that's something moving forward that we do. Regardless of what we do, I think this board has to, has to make a decision as to how that should be worked or not. And that's, again, that's my feeling. That's what I'm looking for, but other people may have a different opinion.
Mr. Chairman? Chris? Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Joe. I think it's a, you know, a different way of looking at, or making sure that we're looking ahead of any potential, you know, it could be Plan A or Plan B, right, for, for traffic. You know, I also look at it that, are we, when we say trucks, is it full 18-wheelers moving slowly, queuing up traffic in that area? Or is it just, you know, smaller, smaller, you know, like a UPS-sized truck, right? I think those are going to have different traffic flow impacts in that area. So when they say truck, what's a truck? Like, is it a fully loaded 18-wheeler that, you know, is right at the, you know, mass DOT limit? You know, it's going to go a lot slower and have more impact on our roads. So again, that leads towards what exactly is going to be part of that wholesaling. I'm still trying to wrap my arms too around the shift change, right? If we have 200 parking spaces up there, and at four, five o'clock, when that shift lets out, and there are 30 to 50 cars leaving that development, and are they going, you know, they going eastbound or westbound on, on Route 16? I think that's going to have a significant impact in that area too. And I just, so I'm just trying to fully understand that aspect and that impact to the area. So there's the truck traffic, and then there's the employee traffic. So to your point, right, let's, let's continue to have the discussion of who will be occupying that facility if it were to go through, because I think, yeah, there are, that traffic study, that traffic impact has varying, varying impacts and varying, varying significant impacts.
Well, as far as the, the traffic study, I don't see any smoking guns here. I mean, I'll leave that to the experts. It's, you know, it's basically a prediction of what's going to happen. I agree that it could change, so as far as the, the study, I don't have any complaints.
Just a response to the suggestion that Mr. Caligoni made. The, I've been involved in multiple projects with similar types of uses, and I've gotten used to having conditions written into the special permit regarding the review of the particular tenant and the nature of that tenant's business. And so I wouldn't be surprised and/or adverse to a condition that required further examination in that regard. And there's a singular, there's as much chance that we may find a tenant that is less intrusive than the tech traffic report indicates for the particular use, we might find someone at the lower end of the scale. So again, I've, I've, I've had this issue before, as I said to the board originally, in today's market, you can't find a tenant unless you can tell them when you can build the building. And obviously, we can't tell anybody when we can build a building until we have a special permit. So there's a, there's a bit of a catch-22 there, but again, I understand that a requirement or a condition that requires further examination when a tenant is identified is something that would fit within the four corners of a special permit decision.
That's not quite everything you said.
Any further?
No.
That's just the traffic. Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone who speak, please stand up, state your name and address, and speak through the chair.
Hi, my name's Deborah Romero, and I live at 4 Wildwood Drive. So I'm nervous. I've lived there for over 30 years, seen a lot of the traffic. I can attest to what the traffic is like now. It's brutal. It's brutal with just regular traffic coming from Holliston, also from the Route 109 and Forts Boulevard. My ex-mum in law a few years ago got clipped twice leaving because people speed both ways. It's just regular cars. They're trying to get the police down there with a speeding thing, and they said it's not important enough for that particular area. I pull out, and I almost get clipped all of the time. Regular people driving to work, not even, not even commuter time. It's a huge safety issue. It's a family-oriented street. We don't have septic systems there. We, you know, I mean, our town, sewage. And it's just, it's just absolutely brutal, and to try to pull out, even go to work, I leave at like 20 minutes of nine. I can't even get out of my street. And people both ways, and it's just not safe in general, never mind adding a company. I can hear jake brakes on 495. I can hear jake brakes on Route 16. I can't sleep. I have to put an air conditioning on. There's just so much traffic in general in the world, and all the motors that are going on 495. So anything additional is just going to cause havoc in a nice little neighborhood. People just have two sets of families, have two little kids now each, it's the kind of home we grew. We moved there. I lived there over 30 years, and I know the person that lived there for 15 years before that. This is just totally destroying the area, and then the woods, never mind. I won't get into that because I could speak again to some of the other stuff. But it's not going to, in my opinion, it's not going to work out. I know that companies, people want to go forward, buy companies' own land, do this, do that, rent it, do all that kind of stuff. It's going to brutalize the neighborhood. It's also a dead-end street that actually, its dog would drive a little bit off of it. People turned around there for over 30 years. There's no way that people aren't going to be going to that facility and turn, oh, we're going the wrong way, too far into Holliston, back the other way. It's just going to destroy the neighborhood as it is, and I don't think it would be fair of the town to let somebody move in there at something like a company like that. It's a huge safety issue, number one. Aesthetics, number two, with sound. What is going to happen if they're, if they have a company in there, they're allowed to be open late at night? I mean, your trucks beeping, backing up, because all legal trucks, right, beep when they back up. It's going to be brutal. It's going to be brutal, not just for me, but for everybody in that street. There's Whispering Pine. I'm sure they have problems pulling out. It's just, it's just not going to go well. And I don't want to repeat myself, but I would hope that the town would say no. Thank you.
Someone else? Yes, sir.
James Cartel, Congress Street, homeowner, 46-year resident of Milford. I'm opposed to the project based on the traffic concerns. Anybody who's been in this town for any length of time has seen the traffic double. Trying to travel through Route 16 downtown is a nightmare six days a week. It's like being in Boston at rush hour. People are now trying to avoid 495, 16, 109, and they're cutting through neighborhoods, putting out children and grandchildren at risk. We're thinking about building a new high school. We have some new elementary schools that were recently built. Further traffic, further congestion, I think is a wrong move for the town of Milford, and I think we need to put the brakes on this type of expansion. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm at Ellis 2 Adams Street, I'm right at the corner of 100, of Route 16. I've owned the house for 27 years. Rightly, if I'm wrong, and the studies that you do are based on reported accidents. I haven't seen any, anything out there that shows that you're counting traffic as it goes by. I know for sure that right as you go from Route 16 onto Adams Street, right in front of my house, there's been a fatality. There have been two rollovers. One, a car rollover that took out a granite, the granite that sits in front of the house, a mailbox, a tree. And the other was a dump truck, came off of 16, rolled over. My neighbor, they, they had a, they, a wake-up in the middle of the night, somebody hit a deer, a young fawn so hard it knocked its head off. The traffic is...
Put it down.
As he says, it's, and she says, it's more than dangerous. And the information that you have, I mean, your report, I'm sure, is fine based on the five years that you've looked at, based on what has been reported to the police, but all of the vehicles, I've seen many, many vehicles that are coming from the stop sign on Adams, trying to get on 16. They start to go, they have to stop, they get rear-ended. Those, those little fender vendors, they don't get reported. So the information that you have on these traffic studies, frankly, is garbage. It's not helpful. And a fatality, to me, I don't care if it was 20 years ago, a fatality is a fatality. And, and we have issues on 16, and it's not going to get any better with 200 cars, or 100 trucks, or whatever else that you're going to put in there in bulk. There shouldn't even be any things on 16, and you tell me that they're going to come just from 109 and Route 495. Truck drivers don't think like that. They're thinking, hey, there's traffic. I'm going to try a shortcut. I'm going to go down 16. I'm going to go through a neighborhood. They're going to go wherever the path of least resistance is, and that's going to impact people's lives and children's lives, and it's not a good place for it. If you're going to put something in that area, it should be going out on Fortune Boulevard. It shouldn't be coming on Route 16. And if you don't own that property, maybe you can buy it. Sounds like you've got lots of money to buy it. Now let's get to the water issue. You're backing up all of the, and I guess I, I'll wait for that, but I'm telling you, traffic, garbage in, garbage out, and this is just more than a bad idea. It's, it's life-threatening.
Yes, sir, in the back.
Thank you. Jim Plantigan, Whispering Pine Drive. So there's a group of us from Whispering Pine Drive that are a little bit ill-informed, so I apologize for not having read the traffic study and seen the site plan. But I'm a master's degree environmental engineer, and I know how traffic studies work. They're all very theoretical. The impact to the town may be relatively insignificant, but for those of us who live right in the area, as this woman has stated, the impact is very severe. I drive out of Whispering Pine Drive, onto Route 16, and up Fortune Boulevard every day. And many times when I come down to the set of lights and hickies, there's an accident there. I don't know how many of these get reported. Many times when I pull out, there's people squeaking by. The speed limit there is 45 miles an hour, for those of you who don't drive that road, and it's a bit of a windy road. In addition, there is a lot of resident parking there. Maybe the towns, other people from around the town have heard about that, but there's a lot of people that park on the street there. So it's very, very dangerous to the people who are very close by, and I really would ask you to look very carefully at the traffic for the impact on the people very nearby. And remember that the traffic study is a study, but we live there every day. I've only lived there 27 years. I must have lived there longer, but the traffic is a mess there, believe me. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Ivy Kramer. I'm at 469 East Main Street. I'm across the street from her. And I won't go over all the traffic because it's true. And like, what she did say is, you don't know about the vendor vendors. On a weekly basis, we have vendor vendors in front of our house. We no longer cut our grass out by the street because you take your life in your own hands. Right in that corner on 16, heading east, you turn left onto Adams constantly. Every week, there's accidents there. So I won't go any further with the traffic. But wouldn't it be possible, if you guys are going to approve this, if we could possibly get signs that state no jake brake area, to possibly help cut down on the amount of noise with these trucks and the jake brakes throughout the whole night that it goes on? That would be one thing. The other is, I've lived here 42 years. The posted speed right now is 40 miles per hour. Going back to before, a state paid Route 16, the posted speed was 30 miles per hour. And it's also a thickly settled area because a lot of the houses are less than 200 feet apart. So again, if you could consider, possibly make a recommendation, if we could get signs put up or change the speed limit back to 30, what it originally was, stating it's a thickly settled area, maybe that would also help cut down on these inflying by at 15 miles an hour, and people like us who can't go out and cut our grass in the front of the property because you're going to end up with cars where they usually get rid of every week. No jake brakes, no speed limit. And also, I don't know if this is going to be a 24/7 operation, but I believe like she had said, you know, trucks, if they're there 24/7, you're backing up, the backup alarms are going off. What if you have refrigerated trucks, and they've got to sit there and idle until they can get into their dock to unload or load? Again, this would happen 24/7 overnight. People are trying to sleep, and you've got trucks backing up with backup alarms and refrigerated trucks, but that's what goes in there, a food distribution center, you know, with their refrigeration that has to keep running and the trucks keep idling. So I mean, there's just a lot of reasons. I mean, I hope you people look at this.
Car from outside, poison.
Then we don't have to worry about it. Yeah, no. So I mean, that's pretty much all I have to say. You just, you know, consider a little more about, especially the traffic and the noise.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Wendy House here, I live at 2 Whispering Pine Drive. We don't have the longevity of living here for so many years. We moved in December of 2020. We're from New York and Watertown, so we're not necessarily immune to the traffic and all of that stuff. We understand that. However, from the time that we moved in until now, it is, it is, it gets very congested. I mean, even pulling out, as everyone said. I agree with everyone. My question or point is, what happens for the school buses that are coming in the morning and then the afternoon? Like, is that going to cause all these trucks in the morning time coming in, pulling in? I'm not even quite sure where the entryway is, but my children and the children in our neighborhood go on. The bus comes down, loops around, comes back. So I'm just, is that going to be a factor, or has it been a factor in the traffic study?
Traffic study is, is an average of things. Those buses would have been counted as part of the traffic analysis there and there.
But in terms of stopping? Stopping and going, stopping and going. And there's four houses just right in that vicinity that they stop. So that's, I'm just curious.
Yeah, and they would end up stopping in the future. I mean, there's no way around that. There's, that's part of...
Agreed. Hence, my question as to these big trucks, depending, I'm just assuming big trucks, right? 18-wheelers or anything in that caliber that are stopping and going. Because they're not fast trucks. I mean, you have to, they got to take some time to go, right? Like, I just, I'm just curious.
They have to stop just like everyone else.
Oh, no, agreed, but that holds up traffic somewhere.
There's no, there's no way for them to try and account for the, what type, I mean, it's really down to axles when they do the counts. So it's not, it's not something, it's way too detailed for them to try and do a study on.
Yeah. And just as seeing it every day, Monday through Friday, I can attest that stopping the traffic, for the buses to stop, get the children on, and then go, and then that bus to loop around, do the same thing. And that's, from my vision alone, is four. That's just my vision alone. I don't know what else, where the stops are, but just to point it out.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Jeff Howard, 23, Zane Circle. I just want to echo many of the same sentiments we share on Zane Circle. We've got 70 households in there. We have to deal with... We've had to deal with Milford Stone blasting for years and years, and the truck impact of that. The jake braking is a big concern. Our street is right where it starts to roll downhill to Fortune Boulevard. We have fully loaded rigs that are pulling in instead of going to Milford Stone, pulling into our street and turning around a very narrow cul-de-sacs for the same reason that when we here spoke about, you know, the impact that people pulling U-turns on Fortune Boulevard. Several, as Mr. Duncan well knows, several of the area of the roadway in our street, we are considered fire lanes. We're not even allowed to park on them because they are too narrow, you know, on the, all the sublutes and side routes. Yet we have fully loaded tractor trailers and, you know, 12-wheel dumps, you know, dump trucks and things like that rumbling through our neighborhood for these, for these same kind of reasons. So I'm not providing any new information. I'm just echoing the fact that the sentiment in our neighborhood of those 70 homes, we share all of the, those same sentiments and concerns about the, about the traffic, about the jake braking, and about the safety concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
How you doing? Kane Pouncy. I live in Windy, Whispering Pine Drive. My biggest role, aside, I echo what everybody's saying, of course, about the traffic and congestion. One of the bigger concerns, I guess, would be the quality of the road is not the greatest. And I just drive basically from Whispering Pine to go to Fortune, to get down to 495. But I know that 18-wheel trucks cause about as much damage as over 9,000 cars. So for every 18-wheeler, it causes the damage of 9,000 cars. And again, the quality of the roads, no disrespect, is, it leaves a lot to be desired. So A, I'm saying, even if it gets passed, is there any possibility to put into contingencies who have the trucking or the company that's responsible for the increase of trucks pay for the road repair? Just a question.
Anyone else? It's a state highway, so the town in Milford doesn't maintain it. We don't choose when it gets paved or not. That's the GAST DOT's decision.
Anyone else? Any other comments from the board?
I believe same thing. In terms of signs, do any signs, changes in speed limits and things like that would have to go back through the state.
Oh, great. Does that include no jake brake signs? Would that require state approval as well?
Yeah, anything within their right of...
Certainly, the speed limit would, obviously, would be a problem.
I mean, I'll walk, if it's a state...
I certainly don't see any issue. If, if it's within our control, I'll certainly speak to...
Sluckin's call, too.
Yeah, speed limit...
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry to be a pest. In regards to being a state highway, it is. The state maintains it. Last year, the state paved it from downtown Holliston to Hickey's Liquor Store, in which it time they plow and they sand. But what I'm asking is, in order to grant Mr. Anton Ellis and his client approval, could you stipulate that they need to work with the state to get these signs and the speed limit changed to what it used to be in thickly settled area? I mean, I understand the town in Milford, they're not responsible for that.
The town engineer will look into what's required or not. Obviously, we can't stipulate that the client has to put signs in that the state says, no, we're not going to allow you to put in. So we'll find out. We'll find out if those, if the state is amenable to changing the speed limit or not, and they may not be, if they're amenable to putting in no jake brake signs along the street. I don't know what they're, what they're calling it.
I mean, I'm okay to have a jake brake sign made. I'm going to...
It's just about the legality of putting up the sign. So we need to, I'm going to check to see if it's the town or...
It's on my property, ma'am.
You can't, you actually can't put it on your property.
It will be followed by deliberations to see what, what we can ask the state to do.
And the developer. I mean, they should be part of it.
Well, yes, but it's ultimately the state's, the state's, the state DOT decisions on all of that.
Correct. No, I understand that.
If this board makes a decision and DOT disagrees with it...
Right, then we can over...
I understand. But if we could try, or require the developer to try.
I don't, we can't, I guess the point is, we can't really require the developer to try, but I think the...
As a stipulation to approval.
I think the developer is going to take, putting a couple of signs up under advisement, and when they apply for their permit through the state, I'm certain that they will bring that up with the state to see if that can be done. So we'll definitely work on the signs.
All right, just so it's not forgotten about, I mean, that would, you know, probably on one, on one. Thank you.
I have one more comment.
Yes.
And also down the road by the bridge there, 495 Hickey Liquors, there's the Amazon parking lot, too. And ever since Amazon came to Milford, that's been a nightmare, too. Speaking, I remember calling the town a couple of years ago, and they said there was nothing. And then I guess they made some kind of community, you know, where you can call and report it because there's no phone numbers on it. You can't, you know, call the Amazon. But there's just so much traffic, and it's a residential area that was, my house was built in 1956. And like I said, it's, like, I guess if housing went in where they're talking about putting a company, that would be one thing. That would add traffic on the roads and don't, it'd be more acceptable traffic than a company with trucks. Not, like I said, not to change the atmosphere. It's a huge safety thing. I just, and then everybody attests to that. But leaving there for a third year, you have the people reporting it. I mean, it's brutal. It's not like, I just don't want the company there. It's brutal. It's not safe. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, just a, just to follow on, it may be helpful for the community to understand a little bit better about what the process is because I know in projects like this, it is not unusual, when the town has control, to be able to tell a developer, you know, you need to make, you need to pay for these road changes or whatever the case is. In a situation like this, where there's potentially a large impact on Route 16, you know, coming and going on what is a very narrow road at that point, no sidewalks, nothing, how can the town, how can the town impact the developers' needs to make a development that is amenable to the community without any ability to influence what happens on Route 16? You know, theoretically, the casino, if that went in there again, it'd be up to the state to decide what was going to happen with Route 16 from a traffic standpoint. You know, we have the, we have the same issue here in this case. So it'd be helpful for me just to, you know, kind of understand, to what extent is the town able, willing to work with the state to try and get some of these changes made that you as the planning board deem appropriate to support a development of this nature?
Well, I think it depends on what you're considering as changes.
Well, there's been talk off and on about, with the casino, there was talk about adding a turn lane in front of Zane Circle. There was talking about putting a traffic light there. There were a number of changes that all would have been in the debate of the state.
The magnitude of traffic for the casino as opposed to the magnitude of traffic for this development are nowhere near.
And I'm just asking a procedural question as to...
Well, and that's why I'm trying to say, it's, whether you believe the traffic analysis or not, the board is somewhat in a situation where it has to believe the traffic analysis because we've had two sets of professionals, one doing a report, one that we hired reviewing that report, coming up with whether that traffic that's being produced by this, by this development has an impact that, that is large enough on, on those intersections immediately adjacent to it that things need to be done. The, the analysis doesn't show that. And, and, you know, I understand people who've talked about it. We can't tell somebody not to develop. We have no, if we turn something down because the town says, we don't want you to develop that, what we stand to do, what we stand to be in is a situation where we get it effectively, for lack of a better word, thrown down our throat. We lose all control over what is done and not done. Because if they go to court and your reason was, you can't tell the last person in that he can't develop his, you let everybody else develop, you let people put in residential Zane Circle, you let people put in this, and now all of a sudden you're telling this guy, he can't do that, you're going to lose in court. And that's not where you want to be. So we're somewhat tied to, you know, to the extent that we can do things, and certainly looking at jake brake, looking at speed limits, things like that we can do. Changing the timing, if that's the thing, or if this was big enough that, that we needed to change the signals that are at those intersections. They need to be upgraded to add new phases or whatever. We can do that. To tell them that they got to put in another lane on 16, or they got to straighten something out, or they got to put in sidewalks along there where their usage doesn't, doesn't use sidewalks, we really don't have the power to do that. So those are the areas that we're dealing with, that we can, you know, what we can do and what we can't do, and what we don't want to get into for the sake of whether we'd like to develop or not, just saying, no, I'm not going to do it, and then having it totally taken out of our control, which is not someplace that I want to be.
Excuse me, I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
Jim Planting again. Because some of us have not been up to speed, where can we view the documents, both the site plan, so we can actually see where the impacts would be in the traffic study and comments? Is that available to the public?
Engineering office, right.
Yep.
It's posted online on the planning board's page. It has been since the beginning. So you can go back and see the different development phases that are posted online.
So it's on the planning board webpage?
Yep.
And high copies are available at the planning and engineering office here in the building.
Great, thank you.
Yes?
So are you, just, because I don't know these things. I had written to Brian Murray, and I think he had forwarded my email to you, but the state is saying that it's up to Milford to go to the planning meeting, and the planning meeting is saying, gee, state is just all about Route 16. So we should be petitioning the state about the issues on Route 16?
About what?
About the traffic issues that we're having and the fact that they're bringing in more congestion to that area.
So the state, we, this, this board has the approval authority for the property, not for the roadway itself. So whatever impacts are being made by this proposed development is through this board's authority. So if your concerns about this project, it should be through this. If you have general concerns about the road, then you can certainly, I'll give you my card and you can talk to me, but that's probably something that needs to go through the state.
So the, the impact of this project to the state, we should be going to the state as well?
Well, the state doesn't have, you know...
The impact of this project, the impact on that street.
The impact of this project on, the impact of developing this project is, will be, actually, it'll get approved by both. It'll be, it has to be approved by this board and then has to be approved through GAST DOT.
Okay. If this development was so intensive that both of the traffic studies said you needed a new signal on Route 16, and you needed to put a turn pocket to get through that signal, the state would have to agree that that traffic and that new development, that new intensity was so great that it warranted the state to approve that kind of project. This development, and that's why we always require a traffic review, this development doesn't trigger any of that. And even if we decided, if the, if the planning board issued a special permit, said this is too much, it's got to have a signal, it's going to have to go to the state. And the state's going to say, it's not warranted, so now you got a special permit that was kind of, had a kind of a bogus condition. That's why we look at the facts, have the scientific investigation on whatever it is, whether it's environmental stuff, whether it's traffic, whatever, so that the board has something to hang its hat on when it comes up with conditions in an approval of a special permit. If they're not warranted, the, the studies are going to show that, and we're not going to put it in a decision. If it is warranted, we can put it in a decision, but even that's going to be subject to meeting all the state's requirements to actually build it to their specifications. And yes, we can require that the developer does that. But that's where the process comes in. The, the state has control of that, of the roadway. The town has control of the land use. So that's where they meet. You can't do it...
It should be challenged.
You can't do it backwards. That's why we hire, ma'am, that's why we hire a peer review consultant. That's why we hire a peer review consultant.
One of the times talking here is, let's get it out of hand.
He's said the same thing six different ways. I understand, but I think it needs to be challenged because I don't buy a five-year period.
We did, we did hire an engineer to, yeah?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Angelica. I'm with Green International. I'm the traffic engineer for this peer review that we're with the town. So our process is to take their initial traffic study that they gave us and make sure that it's up to industry standards and that we're following the things that we need to do to make sure that this is a legitimate study and, and to make sure that the impacts are as much as a prediction as it can be accurate. So we did, to kind of backtrack a little bit, you know, we did review the initial one. We discussed the initial comments at the previous public hearing. Since then, we've kind of had a little bit back and forth. We discussed two of the major comments were changing over the different types of land use code to provide a more conservative analysis, just in case they were to add more trip generation than they initially had. And even with that additional, I believe, the land use code change was about 30 vehicles in the afternoon and the morning hour. Even with those changes, we only saw about a delay increase of one second at all the study intersections. So that's industry standards, it's pretty minimal impacts.
A change of one second.
Yes, in addition.
That you're only waiting, it's just that, yes.
So with that said, we concur with, with their impact study and think it's up to industry standards. So that's kind of the role that we fill in there.
To go, again, going back to the state. The state will tell them how they want the entrance, the curb cut to be built and all that. The state doesn't have the ability to stop trucks from going on the road. That's, it's, it's just non-existent. So that's the problem. The state takes a great deal, a great amount of care to make sure that the entrance and the curb cuts are safe. And that's their thing. Again, as far as the traffic, the traffic itself, the state can't stop trucks from going on the road, so.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Two things, just ours, our operation was something that was brought up, so just want to make sure that you captured that. That was something that I'm not sure if we've really discussed, and just want to make sure that we're aware of that impact as, as this process moves forward. And then the second one is just, certainly think that we should get the opinion of town council. So certainly feel like we should have Larry connect with our town council and start that process just to ensure that we're looking at everything and that he can kind of help guide us in any of these other situations that we're encountering.
I'm sure they'll, and a decision.
With the, with the question, question that I had with town council, which was Larry was speaking to before, because this is, this has been the, for lack of a better word, the elephant in the room to a certain extent. We've had this discussion as to whether we can issue a special permit on usage as opposed to a special permit on the actual applicant, the actual whoever's going to use it. I had asked Larry to talk to town council as to whether we could or couldn't do that. And apparently what came back was that for town council to do that, they believe we have to, we have to vote on the fact that we would like town council to give their opinion as to whether that's, whether they feel that that's something that this board can or can't do. And I'm not sure that the board wants to or not, but if we want to, we, I think we need to, it would behoove us to have town council's opinion of that. I felt it was important, which was I reached out to Larry to, to get that, because it sort of frames what we can do, you know. Hours of operation would be in the record of decision. We, we can list what those hours are as part of our record of decision. Those types of things can be handled there. Can we say we're not going to grant a special permit unless we know who's in there or not? I don't know. I don't know. Attorney Antonellis believes that, obviously, we can do it, do we want to do it, and can legally, can we say no if we don't know who that is? There may be diverging views, maybe there isn't, maybe, maybe that, you know, we're supposed to do that, but I thought it would be important for us to know. If you want that as a motion, that we asked Larry to discuss with, to have town council render opinion as to whether a special permit can, whether we can ask as part of the special permit, who the final user would be, I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that motion.
Moved in second, we asked town council on if the user, if we have to have a user, or we can do it as a special permit. Any further discussion on that? Three second?
Correct.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous of five?
Four.
Four?
Yeah, Martha can't vote.
Martha can't participate.
Oh, yes, excuse me.
You can only talk about your kid. You can't vote.
Sorry.
Regardless of that, okay. unanimous of five?
Four.
Yeah, we should be able to have something by the 16th.
Well, the other thing I think that's outstanding, too, that we still, I mean, obviously, I think it would be important, I know you've drawn up a record of decision, Larry, at least preliminarily, it would be good if the applicant can comment on that. I haven't seen anything back on that. The other thing that I think, in going forward, looking at whenever we come back for the next meeting, is I'd like to know what that E1P looks like.
Yeah, I think by the time we come back, we should have a lot more information on all of those fronts, and Joe and I were trying to come up with language to get at a variety of these issues. The change in use later on, how that's affected, what has to be done, not just traffic-wise, but procedurally under the special permit, and then get to the issue of how precise or specific can you be as to a user when you use generalized use terms as a wholesaler? You know, what is it? So, we'll try to get all that, we should be able to have all that tied down, have answers from town council, and hopefully, a draft decision that I can distribute to the members before the meeting. Gentlemen, get anything else to present? Attorney Antonellis, do you have any, any further comments?
Thank you. No, the only question, the point I wanted to make, I just wanted to make certain that if there are any questions regarding the site layout, drainage, et cetera, that the town engineer recognizes that the, our staff, that people at Bowler are prepared to respond over the next couple of weeks, so that we don't have any lingering issues coming into the next meeting. I think, from what I hear, that Liz has had the opportunity to review all of the changes, and I'm sure that she'll have a report for us, and I'm hoping that we, if there are she has concerns, that we can address them prior to the next meeting. And with that said, I would respectfully request, on behalf of the applicant, that the planning board continue this hearing, our public hearing, until July 16.
Just to let the board know, I have been reviewing it. I haven't completed my review, but I've been on, I've spoken with them to go over some of the changes that I'd like to see, so we've been going back and forth, and this is in front of, this will be in front of conservation as well, so I'm looking at it from both perspectives right now, but yes.
Thank you.
Yes? Okay. Make a motion, we'll continue.
I just said thank you.
July meeting?
July 16?
16.
Oh, I can't.
Second. I'll second that.
Moved in second, we...
And to close the public hearing?
No, 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 continue the public hearing.
Sorry, sorry.
July 16, is it, Larry?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, before I call for a vote, we will continue this meeting on July 16. You're all invited. And with that, any further discussion? If not, hearing any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
I'm standing.
Four in favor, one abstention. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to thank everyone for coming, they were very polite.
Didn't want to...
Made the meeting go a lot easier.
Elizabeth, we both got shorn. Yeah, on mine, I got, I mean, it was short already, but now it's like...
Joe, we're good.
Like a pixie.
Joe, you're still there?
Yes, I am.
We're going to take Sierra next for you, so you don't have to stay on.
Thank you very much.
Hey, we've got more, more, more things to take care of on this meeting. If we could take all your discussions outside, we'd appreciate it very much.
Yes, great, thanks. How many you have now? Look online first.
Sierra shouldn't take, but not the...
I'm seven and eight.
Isn't it something?
Okay. You want to have a discussion, please, outside. Attorney Antonellis, you want to...
Yes, well, thank you, thank you.
Wait a minute, Larry, you...
Yeah, normally for the ZBAA referrals, I can screen my report.
Okay, Larry's going to lead his report first, Joe.
Hello.
Thank you.
Everybody that's trying to follow along, we're skipping ahead to agenda seven and eight, dealing with Sierra Naturals, ZBAA variants referrals, Sierra Naturals, One Industrial Road. The applicant requests variants, the applicant requests variants from the 200-foot separation requirements to convert the existing marijuana establishment to a medical marijuana treatment center on the subject property at One Industrial Road. The applicant intends to decommission the existing medical marijuana treatment center that it has at 13 Commercial Way, and relocate it to this property at One Industrial Road, as evidenced by the special permit application filed concurrently with this case. Medical marijuana treatment centers are provided for in the zoning bylaw by ZBAA special permit within the IB and IC districts, and further subject to the requirements of footnote 23 of the Use Regulation Schedule. The footnote specifically provides that no medical marijuana treatment center shall be located within 200 feet of a residential zone, dwelling unit, school, place of worship, church, park, playground, or youth center. Measurements to determine the 200-foot separation shall be taken from property lines. Where any portion of a lot is within a required separation, the entire lot is considered within the separation. As noted above, the applicant has concurrently applied for the requisite special permit. However, the variants will be necessary from the 200-foot separation requirement prior to the proper consideration of the special permit. The existing marijuana establishment at One Industrial Road is used for cultivation of non-medical marijuana only. It was allowed due to Sierra Naturals' predecessor, which was Bay State Relief, having been licensed or registered by the state and approved to operate in Milford prior to July 1, 2017, as a medical marijuana treatment center at their 13 Commercial Way site, and that is as per footnote 29 of the Use Regulation Schedule. It is at operation at 13 Commercial Way that they now seek to decommission and relocate to One Industrial Road. In the intervening years, an affordable housing development under Chapter 40B, the state zoning override law, has been developed on the abutting 27-acre property to the north at the site that's numbered 15, Birch Street. That, by default, has triggered application of the 200-foot separation requirement, and due to lot configurations, has reduced any separation to zero as their abutting properties, even though both properties are still entirely within the industrial zone. While some 560 feet separates the existing structure and the closest residential building in the 40B development, measurements to determine the 200-foot separation, as mentioned earlier, must be taken from property lines. No other changes are being proposed to the site. I recommend a favorable report before to the zoning board of appeals. As you can see on the attachments in the packet, the 40B site is immediately adjacent to this property, they share property lines, so it's virtually no separation whatsoever. The existing cultivation center has been there for a number of years without problems. This would be essentially an interior alteration that should, should the variants be granted by the ZBAA, then they would consider the special permit. And Joe's here, if he needs to add comments.
Attorney Antonellis?
Well, thank you for the opportunity. Again, this is a situation that's occurred basically because the company is trying to just streamline its operations, and really not going to create any need for any new employees. We're basically going to be moving a couple of tables from the original medical marijuana facility over to adult recreational facility, so that some of the medical marijuana products can be processed there. While the plant is exactly the same, the Commonwealth has designated two particular uses for adult cannabis, one being medical and the other being recreational, and in order to properly maintain all our licenses, we have to be properly cited, and so simply, we're going to have people working at a couple of tables in the newer building that used to be in the old building, and it's, again, it's a complicated, it's a complicated process, not only here in Milford, but also with the Cannabis Control Commission, because they have to approve everything, to just simply move a couple of tables, but General Counsel of Sierra, who you all know, Mr. Fernandez, is very thorough on these types of things, and John has analyzed it and gotten opinions from the Cannabis Control Commission, and they've advised us this is the appropriate way to proceed. Sierra Naturals has a very, a good standing with the Cannabis Control Commission. They are one of the leaders in the industry. I think you may recall that the original Bay State Relief and Sierra is successor to that. That was actually the first medical marijuana grow facility fully permitted in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the company has done very well. And again, this is just a mere combination to be able to just process some medical marijuana in the building where non-medical marijuana is grown. And so, we've asked for a special permit, which is required under the zoning bylaw, and again, also for the variants, because of the fact that 40B, a 40B project creates a residential use, and the bylaw clearly says a residential use, doesn't say a residential zone, so that's the necessity for the variants. And it's, it's really not, not going to amount to anything other than that, so I hope, I hope the board is confident and comfortable in making this record. Thanks.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Yeah, I mean, I have no issues. It sounds like, you know, that they've been good neighbors in that area, and no negative storylines with them, so certainly be in support of this.
Is that a motion?
I'll be, I'll make a motion to send a favorable report, or favorable recommendation, excuse me, for the, to the ZBAA, for Sierra Naturals, for One Industrial Road.
Second? Moved in second, and to send a favorable report to the ZBAA. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous of five? Larry, you want to go with the...
Number eight, number eight. Again, ZBAA special permit referral, Sierra Naturals, One Industrial Road. The applicant requests special permit approval to convert the existing marijuana establishment to a medical marijuana treatment center on the subject property, and applicant intends to decommission, as we mentioned in the other report, the medical marijuana treatment center at 13 Commercial Way, and relocate it to One Industrial Road. Medical marijuana treatment centers are provided for in the bylaw by special permit, by ZBAA special permit. The existing establishment was built due to Sierra Naturals' predecessor, Bay State Relief, having first been licensed to operate prior to July 1, 2017, as a medical marijuana treatment center at their 13 Commercial Way site. The recently constructed 40B development is what triggered the necessity for the variants, for the 200-foot separation. It does not appear that there will be any externally discernible difference between the existing marijuana establishment operation and the proposed medical marijuana facility. As no other changes are being proposed to the site, and all other applicable zoning requirements appear to be met, subject but for the variants, I recommend a favorable report.
I would repeat what I just said earlier. That'll keep it short for you.
Unless somebody has something else to say, I would recommend that we send a favorable recommendation to the zoning board of appeals on this special permit, subject to the variants being granted.
I'll second.
Moved in second, and we send a favorable recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous of five? Attorney Antonellis, have a good evening.
Thank you for moving this up on the agenda, I appreciate it. Have a good evening, everybody. Night.
Good night. Milford Humane Society, sorry to hold you up.
Never hold up the cap.
Tell me to read my report? Yeah, yeah, this is amended site plan for the Humane Society at 289 West Street. It's in a commercial C-zone. Humane Society requests amended site plan approval for a proposed addition to the existing building on the subject property. The proposal is to construct a 14-by-24-foot addition to the rear of the cat shelter building. The purpose of the addition of the addition is to meet state requirements for the quarantining, quarantining of intake animals. A small portion of the new addition will be for additional storage. No new staff are being added, no other changes are being proposed, so I recommend it be approved as submitted, subject to agency comments. You have favorable from fire, favorable from water, from health, from highway.
I have no concerns.
I would like to just make one minor update to the plan. Based on recent discussions with the client, we were looking to do a 14-foot wide by 28-foot long versus the 24-foot long. We wouldn't be increasing any sort of non-conformities or anything regards to setbacks, it's just going to be pushed a little bit closer to the existing portion of the building here, because most of that storage, or that space is going to be used for storage, and then just a small portion for the intake of animals. Again, no change to the parking calcs or anything will be occurring there. This plan here does have updated zoning table, just in case if there was any concerns or anything there. Just at least want to put that on record, where you guys are going to be voting on that.
Say, we need to make sure that we're, when you approve it, that it's per that site plan, so that when it goes to the building department, that...
Yeah.
Because that's really more of a, I would think, more of a building issue, if anything.
Yeah, and I do have two additional copies here, if that's sufficient. Sure.
So, the new building, the building is going to be 14 by 28, not 14 by 24?
That's correct.
But the back wall is still the same place.
Specify that in the motion. I would just specify the provision date. Okay, the date of the, yeah.
This is going to have quarantine cats in?
Ah, yes, I believe so.
Is that taking the place of the interior quarantine area, or...
This was, this was something that the state stepped in and asked for a room to be designated for any new cats that came in, they have to be put in a separate room, a separate area. And then the rest is storage space that was needed.
Yeah, I knew it was one... Is that taking the place of the interior quarantine area or?
This was, this was something that the state stepped in and asked for a room to be designated for any new cats that came in. They have to be put in a separate room, a separate area. And then the rest is storage space that was needed.
Yeah, I knew there was one room in there that we had to put a negative, negative pressure into. When you turn the light on to go in the room, there's a fan, an exhaust fan that creates a negative pressure.
I know there's makeup air in that building, but I don't.
I think that's all going to get replaced with this new room.
Yeah, like I said, I was just curious, curious about it because I was, I was shocked, I was shocked when they had to have the separate room for.
The requirements behind it.
It's interesting, to say the least. But due to the fact, you know, the state came out and asked you to do this, it was a bit of an upgrade, so.
It's a well-run establishment, so. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion. We approved the amended site plan dated today's date, June 4th.
June 4th.
Yep.
2024. I second that.
Moved in second, we approved the amended site plan with the plan of the date of June 4th. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous of five.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
It's amended site plan for 50 Birch Street in the IB zone. Applicants requesting amended site plan approval to allow for a used auto sales operation on the subject property. Auto sales uses are provided for in the zoning bylaw by ZBA special permit within the IB district. The applicant was granted a special permit by the ZBA on 41124, subject to the number of vehicles for sale and or display being limited to six as located on the proposed site plan. The recorded decision is attached in your packet. The proposed site plan indicates existing parking configuration, the interior building features, and office areas. It indicates the proposed second-floor auto sales office location and the vehicle display area in the Easterly parking lot. The off-street parking calculations have been updated to include not only the existing contractor's yard uses on the property, but the proposed auto-related use as well. No other changes are being proposed to the site. I recommend approval of the site plan, subject to relevant agency comments. Again, the decision is included in the packet. You have Liz's comments, I'll skip over momentarily. Pages are all stuck together. You have favorable from fire, favorable from water, from health, and from highway. So I don't know, Liz, do you want to mention yours?
Yeah, so I, I mean, I just had a mostly clarification things that, and I believe he addressed everything, like the words, the fire lane, no parking on the pavement, whether or not that was going to be on the pavement or not. So they've added that. And there's striping over the, you can, the existing stripe, the area on the exit part of the fire lane, need a minimum of 12 feet. And between the existing column on the brick pad and the existing striping, it's not 12 feet. So they're going to, when they restripe, they're going to have to fix that, which they're showing. So addressed all my issues. The only one that was, that was still outstanding, and this is, I didn't know what the board would want, is how, if you wanted the exterior parking, the exterior display area differentiated from the parking spaces in some way, or if it was fine to just leave it striped like parking spaces, that's, is the, that's the one piece that I think I would like to see you guys show some direction on so that I know what to agree to or not agree to when they have it out there.
Yeah, it's going to be easier to determine where the cars are supposed to be displayed if some, some sites have used a different color dashed line around the perimeter of the display area. Others have done that as well as crosshatching, as it's actually shown on the site plan. Sometimes that's easier to just do the crosshatching of that, of those six spaces.
Yeah, the crosshatching would be rather than to change colors and it's, gets a little, not much inexpensive, but it gets, be a pain, so if you're going, if we're going to do anything, just crosshatch.
Or signage would be the other. Yeah, yeah, the crosshatching would signal to visitors and customers not to park there if there was one of the, for sale cars out on a test drive or something. But yeah, I was kind of thinking signage, but now I kind of like the striping idea.
Yeah, and Ron's here.
Carry their weight, honestly, not by much.
What's that?
Not that either is really better or worse than the other, signage or striping. But yeah, some designation.
Yeah, and Ron's here, so.
Do you want me to comment on that?
You'd like.
Maybe bring some insight?
The chair would like you to.
I'm in the car business, so I got, you know, I know about kind of stuff like this. I've been in the car business for 35 years. I've never, and I'm not against it, I've never seen anything crosshashed or denoted. Now, sometimes when you're in a bigger industrial thing or, you know, multi-b buildings put together, the DMV has regulations for that stuff. So DMV kind of crosses what you're saying. So this is not the case, but if you were in a complex that had four buildings, the DMV specifically wants you to mark off. So they use stuff like, like a plastic chain or something that denotes where you are. In this particular case, there's no one in the parking lot. It's a completely empty parking lot, just half of it. But, you know, and the lines are already there. And also, we had this discussion early on, sometimes it's better not to put lines in a space because really what it is, is storage. It's not coming or not going, it's a storage of vehicle. You know, I'm fairly amendable to whatever happens, but there's another thing, the other thing that, that this might be slightly off-subject, but if, kind of what I think you're saying in some form or manner is, how do you know which is where? How do you know where to park? How do you know what cars are for sale? First of all, there's only six of them, and they're only six in the parking lot. So it's not like, you know, say it was being transcribed. But the DMV has regulations for that, too. So they want stickers, they want all sorts of compliance stuff. And that's, you know, that's just, that's just protocol. Now, not many people do it. I just make a practice of doing it. I've been, I've been doing it for years, that's what I know, and I like to stay in compliance. So if you're asking, how do you know where the, which cars are for sale, that's how you know. If you're asking where the customers, how would they know where to park? Well, it's completely, there's no one else in the parking lot, so just say.
That may not be the case in the future. As, as we talked about with you before in terms of why we were doing this or not, if the other usage changes, but it's still legal and all of a sudden they have 50 people that are parking there, how do we, how do we, how do we make sure that you still have your spaces at the end of the day?
Things change, it's like, things change, there's no.
I think that's what we're looking at, is, is, you know, how would we?
I don't, you know, I can, I can make a stripe of different colors on a big deal. I can do much whatever you want, doesn't it? Just throwing out, the DMV controls some of that.
Yeah, as far as the vehicles itself, that's a, that I don't think we're worried about. I think we're more worried about if this parking lot were full, which it could legitimately be, it may not be now, but it could be with that size building. Where do we, where do we say, okay, Ron Gray's cars will be here, and here's all the other parking, and how do we make sure that we, you know, we have that differentiated going forward?
Yeah, I mean, they're differentiated on the plan because that's what I was asked to do, but I understand, I understand what you're saying. Again, it don't really matter to me, you know.
Well, things that are, that are shown on an approved site plan need to be done on the ground.
Yes.
And we have, this board, this board has absolutely, in other cases, have had them mark the area differently for the cars, places, I have seen it, so maybe you haven't visited those lots.
Years, I've never seen it, but there's a.
Yeah, I mean, I think other places that you had have been your own standalone. This is obviously kind of in a sense a mixed-use building, right? So you've got other companies running out of it.
It's got a double usage.
So, yeah. And there are four other parking spots there, there's seven in the front. So I think, yeah, trying to designate your six specific spots is just probably maybe a safety net as you don't know who another tenant could be. So I certainly would recommend.
He's going to like it anyway, so.
Right, so, you know, certainly to Martha's point, whether, I'm good with, with just striping, indicating on the ground and no need for specific signage behind the cars because you're not going to see them anyways. Okay.
They have their regulations.
You don't have to do signage on the cars.
As well as the DMV wants, like a sign on the building, a sign.
On the parking spot. This, this, this spot is designated for Keystone cars. You do not need to have that by the state. We just, we're just suggesting it from the plan.
I think they would be open to.
Is that a motion?
However.
Yeah, I could paint, I could, I could put like a plastic chain in the back that they need those spots, you know.
No signs, no designation, it's up to him.
Well, you got to restripe anyway, right? You got to make some striping.
There's striping already there.
Yeah, but this.
Lane striping.
Oh, the 12-foot wide marker, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, so.
And the handicap, and the handicap stuff has to be restriped as well.
Martha, you have a opinion?
It's not a, it's not a big.
Just have them do one and do the other stuff, it's okay.
I mean, to me, I, it probably would be easier if we at least put one sign in the middle that said, "Display vehicles only" or something like that in front of the, in front of the six-stripe thing so that somebody knew why they were, as opposed to somebody looking at it.
I don't think you could put a sign in the front.
No, 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 that's not what we're talking about.
In the.
Well, if, depending on, when you start talking about signage, you're overly complicating things because freestanding signs need to be shown on the plan, and the only freestanding sign that's shown on the plan is the existing one out front. So we can't, unless there's some other provision to do it on the plan, as a directional sign, it needs to be shown on the plan and shown what it's going to look like, and they need to be very small. So I think that's going to be overly complicated. I don't know.
Just stripe it, do a different color maybe or something.
Yes.
I'm kind of moving towards not telling the gentleman how to run his business and not directing him to designate the spaces because he will presumably work it as it, have the site work as best it can for this, for his business.
Well, he's got a special permit based on this site plan that specifies six cars for sale, no more in that spot. So they need to be designated differently than typical parking spaces. The way we've done it, as Liz has mentioned in the past, the simplest way is to stripe them off. If he wants to add little bollards with chains around to help designate it, that might be helpful, too. But on the site plan, I think it needs to be shown as it's shown, as it's crosshatched.
It's helpful to me, Martha, if somebody calls up and says, there's 15 cars parked, and, and I go out there, or even if they say there's, there's cars parked all over, there's used cars for sale all over this parking lot, and I go out there and there's three used cars parked over, you know, right next to the handicap spot, right?
Yeah.
And then I can look at the site plan and I can see that these, this area, this isn't where he's supposed to have.
Okay.
And I can more easily identify where they're supposed to be, how, and I guess it doesn't really help me with how many, but it just helps me to be able to say.
For your site inspections and compliance issues, sure.
And the select board is not going to grant a Class II license for something that doesn't look pretty much like this site plan.
Okay.
So this site plan satisfies his special permit requirements, it'll hopefully satisfy the site plan review requirements, and it'll eventually satisfy the select board's licensing requirements, so he'll have been able to use the same site plan at all three levels of approval. So the selectman.
I don't feel strongly either way, so.
So make a motion to approve the site plan at 50 Birch Street. Oh, hold on, I just want to, and just to, I just want to make sure that we're going to include the on-pavement cross-action, crosshatching over the six designated spots to indicate which spots will be designated for car sales.
Yep. And the plan that we're looking at now is dated today, we just got it, so.
And, yeah, so that would be for June 4th, 2024.
Second.
You got ahead of me.
Okay, but moved in second, but so.
So this doesn't need to be revised, right?
No.
Okay.
No, it's already.
No, it, yeah, it already.
Okay.
I'm sorry, who, second? Martha? Okay.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous of five. Thank you.
Does somebody get this from our copy to sign off on where's the site?
Yes.
And then you sign it and then you keep it? Is that what happens?
No, I'll sign it, I'll call you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Rail Trail, no one's here on that. That's a referral. ZBA special permit referral, 221, 223 Main Street, Rail Trail Flatbread. The applicant requests special permit approval for the use of a portable storage container on the subject property. Portable storage containers are considered portable warehouses for purposes of zoning and as such require a special permit approval as per section 3.2.5.1 of the zoning bylaw. Specifically, the proposal is to retain the portable storage container that has been placed adjacent to the outdoor restaurant patio at the rear of the building. The container is for the storage of the firewood used in the operation of the restaurant kitchen. Should be noted that the plan submitted with this application is proposing site alterations that have yet to be approved by the planning board. So when it comes back for site plan approval for the storage container, you'll be reviewing a bunch of other stuff. I recommend a favorable report before to the ZBA, subject to the site plan being submitted back to you subsequent to their approval.
The plans attached on the last sheet, I highlighted the metal storage container at the back of the building, and then they had included a couple of photos, recent photos of the container as it sits now. And all this was installed months ago without any approvals.
No, who would do that?
So the container is obviously there, since it's in the picture, it wasn't photoshopped. That isn't photoshopped, that's a, that's a real. I hadn't noticed it either, though, which is funny.
It appears, it appears that.
Fire safety is even better, it's better just for fire safety.
Well, that was, I guess, my only question and comment. Is that, is that allowed in that location? I mean, it's right.
Yeah, I think you'll be all right with that. I had the chief look at it, and he'll be reporting when the site plan comes around. He typically doesn't do a formal report on the ZBA referrals. But we'll get one.
Yeah, I didn't want to go through this twice. As long as that, that's okay, and you don't have any issues.
How big, how big are those? Are those 20-footers?
That's a, that's a 20. Have we ever sent a recommendation, like favorable or unfavorable with any stipulations?
Certainly can.
Okay.
Yeah, you can, but.
I'm just saying.
If you want to waste the ink.
You can also spit in the wind.
So was that, was that a motion?
Not yet.
So I guess, yeah, one, one thing I would discuss in, with that is, it is kind of unsightly with, as a storage container, and over time, it's a metal storage container that is going to be in New England winters, and it's going to probably get some rust or anything like that. So my concern with that is saying that, saying or stating some type of fencing or, or should be maybe on each side of it or in potentially in front, almost like we do for dumpsters.
You can do that at site plan review.
Right, okay. So, but I'd rather, yeah, I'd rather them know now.
Well, yeah, they painted it the same color as the building.
Yeah.
I'd rather paint it and put a fence up around it.
Regardless, it's a site plan review.
Yeah, it's a site.
Yeah. I would decorate it with boards or attach to it.
Something, but I think just the basic storage container sitting there.
I know what you're saying, but I mean, I'm not sure. I'm not sure because this is a container. I mean, somebody goes into a building and does nothing to it for 40 years, and we just look at it, and it looks like it's falling down. We have no recourse. It's like, are we really going to force this guy to to do something more than what we do on any other building?
It's new, though, right?
I think you'll I think you'll find out when they come back for site plan review. They're amenable to dress it up somehow, so I wouldn't worry about it at this stage. We'll talk we'll be talking to them soon.
Move we transmit a favorable report to the ZBA subject to site plan being submitted to this board. Subsequent to ZBA action.
A second then.
Moved in second, we send a favorable report to the ZBA. Any further discussion? Any others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous of five.
Moving right along.
Chickens.
Here we go.
Item six.
Chickens.
ZBA special permit referral, Argentina Monterosso, 155 Purchase Street, RB Zone. Applicant requests special permit to allow for the keeping of residential animals on the subject property. Property consists of one single family dwelling on a one-acre lot. Specifically, the proposal is to raise chickens within the fenced-in rear yard. Several of the existing sheds are proposed for use as future chicken coops. The applicant has been made aware of the Board of Health's recently adopted regulation for keeping a fowl, so they can properly gauge how those rules affect their proposal. I've attached a copy of that for your review in the packet. I recommend a favorable report be forwarded to the ZBA. Somewhere in the packet, I think it's the next to the last page in this case, is reduced version of the site plan. Obviously, it's a large acre lot. House is up front. From the house back, it's all fenced off, and there are a number of sheds, some of which are proposed for chicken coops. But I don't know how they are really going to fit in with the Board of Health regs. He's going to have to figure that out. I'm sure the ZBA is going to be interested in that as well. And the last page is an aerial from the GIS that shows this backing up to Shadowbrook. So they'll be happy.
I mean, generally, I had no issues. I just I don't like the use of the existing ones that are two feet off the property line being used as coops.
Exactly.
The ones in the middle, I think, that's fine.
Good spot.
Yeah. I mean, I guess to put that in a I make a motion, we send a favorable to the ZBA provided that that no chicken coop be located within.
25 feet.
Well, the Board of Health regs.
The Board of Health is the pot I don't is does the Board of Health Reg have? It's the building, isn't it? Not the pos.
The zoning the zoning bylaw says you've got to have a 25-foot.
Yeah, I was just going to say side yard setback.
Right. Rear yard setback, yeah.
Fifty feet from a dwelling on an abutting property and 25 feet from the dwelling on the pos. See, they don't address it.
They don't even, yeah. The zoning bylaw addresses it.
So I'll make it 25 feet.
Well, it says, yeah, there's say at least 10 feet from the property line. All chicken coops relocated at least 10 feet from the property line.
It wouldn't really be 25. It would be half, assuming it's smaller than.
Well, one would and one wouldn't, I think. Yeah, so just say it meets. Just say it meets a zoning setback.
Be half, but they could be half.
But I think one of them doesn't come under the half, but just.
One of them probably doesn't.
But the condition could be to meet zoning setback requirements.
Yeah, right.
Whatever they have for building.
They can move them easily enough.
Yeah, I can't imagine that they're that big that there's plenty of room.
So favorable subject to zoning setbacks.
Could you repeat your motion, Joe, please?
Motion that we send a favorable recommendation to the to the ZBA provided that no chicken coop that the chicken coops need to meet the zoning setback requirements.
Is the zoning setback requirement 10-foot inside and rear?
Depends on which building you're talking about.
Probably bigger.
One would be 12 and a half, and the other one, one would be 12 and a half, one would be 25.
Okay.
So that's why you just said setbacks.
If the building is a certain size where it didn't meet.
It's 120.
It's either 100 or 20. I forget now.
As far as the setbacks, you say?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's 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 their setbacks.
Board of Health.
That's the Board of Health. Our setbacks, our zoning setbacks is is 25 feet.
Gotcha.
If it's under a certain square footage, you can do half of it, which would be 12 and a half, and the other one would be 25, so.
So the point being that the Board of Health regulations and the zoning bylaw setbacks are by all means, this is I'm stating the obvious here, not necessarily the same.
Correct.
And the members are leaning towards, if I'm reading the room right, requiring the zoning setbacks.
They would have to meet the furthest of any of them.
Of any of the above, yeah.
In some instances, the 10 feet would be more than the zoning.
Like in my zoning district, 10 feet is probably the requirement, yeah.
Right. So it, I don't know, I'm not even sure that you really need to make it as part of the motion because they have to meet zoning setbacks anyway.
Well, it was just not.
Already there.
What I'm saying is you can't use that one as a as a coop.
I got you.
So they'd have to move them.
Unless you pick it up.
That's why the motion says subject to setback requirements. So was that a second somewhere?
Yes. Second.
Thank you.
Moved in second, and we send a favorable recommendation to the zoning board provided they meet the zoning zoning setbacks. Any further discussion?
None.
Any none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cluck.
It would be that any chicken coop needs the zoning setback.
Yes.
Yes.
I got it.
Anything.
unanimous of five.
They can keep their existing buildings where they are, not conforming and not telling them to move.
Got it.
Okay, so.
I'll get it for I can get that.
Where are we? Number nine?
Number nine.
Moving right along. ZBA variance referral, Vineyard Point Ventures, 3 Vavenna Street. The applicant requests a variance from front yard setback requirements to allow for the construction of a small addition to the front of the church building, the north side of the building located on the subject property. The proposal will enlarge the existing covered Vavenna Street entryway to accommodate the addition of a eight-and-a-half-by-nine-foot restroom to the existing church building. Building was originally constructed in 1940 with only an 11-foot setback from Vavenna Street and with the existing covered entryway, which I think was added later, which further encroaches onto the front yard with only a two-foot setback remaining along the Vavenna Street line. The proposed addition will extend the north building line of the entryway eight-and-a-half feet further to the east and maintain the two-foot setback. No other changes are being proposed to the site. Recommend a favorable report be forwarded to the ZBA. There should be next to, well, three pages in from the last is the blow-up of a portion of the site plan that shows the small addition. There is a schematic drawing. I tried to outline in yellow the addition as they intend to extend the entry porch, basically. And then the last page is a copy of what they sent in as the floor plan. Hopefully, they're not going to build it to scale according to the plan that it's really going to be square.
That would be easier for them.
What's the plus or minus 160 feet? It's not a tolerance, is it?
No, the 160 feet is the length of the property.
The front yard. This is the old Owl Club.
Is that like 160 feet for our?
Yeah.
It's the old one?
Owl Club.
Owl?
Oh, the Owl Club, yes.
I've not heard of that one.
Because they don't want to.
Oh, on that, yeah.
Haven't been around.
Haven't been around one.
That was my neighbor.
As far as I'm concerned, you shouldn't be able to get a variance if you don't have a land-surveyed stamp plan.
Well, there is a plan. I just blew up part of it so you could read it.
Oh, there is a survey plan?
Yeah, there's a stamp plan.
It's a pleasure of the board.
I've never heard of a problem of them hitting a thing on Vavenna.
Right here, land plan.
Having it be another 90 feet longer would be off the proper line.
A motion?
Make a motion.
One did it.
Final answer, man.
Two feet's two feet. I just make a send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA.
A second.
Moved in second, we send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA. Any further discussion? Any none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous of five. Next, we have the appointment to the planning board representative of the high school building committee.
Yeah, there was concern that your vote last time, while it may have been well-intended, since it wasn't on the agenda, that caused some problems. It's on the agenda now in case you want to do it again, which I assume you will.
Was that a recommendation from the same person that said you had to get you had to get all of us to vote for having them give us an opinion?
Sort of, yeah.
Just checking.
I guess, yeah. What's that?
I'm still in the same position I was. I still would like to serve on board.
I get it, yeah. And and my hesitation back two weeks ago was just to try to set that pathway, and I felt like we were premature, and again, it wasn't on the agenda. So that was my concern. Since then, right, obviously, time to look through and really consider how we're going to to look at the makeup of this board and who the different people are going to be on, myself included from the school committee side. So where things get tricky, right, is I'm on I'm a dual role, right, where I'm on planning board and on school committee. Potentially, I would serve under that school committee role. Any additional members or is we have to be careful, the amount of additional members coming from this board, because if we go two's okay, as soon as we go to three, then we become a majority, and now we have to look at doing a dual posted meeting every time the the building committee went to meet. So those some of those things, again, as we've thought through and looking at the makeup of the board, these are the things that need to be considered as we look at the individuals that are interested in being a part of this board. You know, it's an important role. We all know that. And with that, just to ensure that we think about those things and we step through the process methodically, right? And that's why, again, back to my hesitation of two weeks ago, to ensure that we're looking at all these different scenarios. And since then, I have looked at these scenarios, and I've had lots of discussions with different people, and that's why I'm bringing it up now, because, again, two board members, two planning board members, okay, three planning board members makes it a different dynamic when we go to these meetings.
Well, you better tell me when you're posting the meeting, so I can post one, too.
Exactly. So that's what I'm saying. It's not the end-all.
No.
It's not. It's just after after talking to town council.
Right.
And what that is, it just makes it a little bit.
Where the board members applied outside of the planning board.
Oh, I see.
Because the dynamic is not, I mean, we did this the last the last school building committee. There was two members of the planning board on on that committee. If one of the other members were to to make, you know, to ask for that, then that's what we'd have to do. I mean, doing the right thing is not a reason not to do this. If there's three members of the planning board that are interested in doing it and certainly fit the criteria, then then that's how, to me, that's how that board should go forward, so.
Correct. It doesn't, it's not a showstopper. It just creates.
It's a layer.
It just creates a different dynamic within the board, so.
Yeah, but I mean, at the end of the day, that building committee needs to meet the same requirements that we meet as a meeting anyway, so it just becomes a dual posting of that meeting. It becomes a planning board meeting as well.
Correct, yeah. So I just, again, want to make sure that everybody was aware of that.
Yep.
You know, these are some, these are the things that were, as discussions ensuing and and we're getting applications, and that that everybody on this board is is aware of that, too, because others may have.
Uninterested.
You know, interest, thank you. Have an interest in going on, again, myself included, more from the school committee side, that's why. So by stating that, you know, I'd, you know, I'd become another planning board member that has potential to be on that board. So with that, yeah. And also, it's just, I think I'd like to hear from a couple of any any members that would be interested in why, right? And we're doing that from the standpoint of from the school committee side, right? We're we're asking for resumes, and we're looking for that building experience. And I know that people on this board have that. I think it's good to state it publicly a little bit, and I'm not saying like this huge long resume, but just so others out there in the community understand why certain individuals are being appointed from certain boards, because, again, school committee-wise, we're looking for resumes, and we're looking for that building and architectural experience, and that is our hope on who to our two appointments, that we're looking for that level of expertise to bring to that board, so. With that, I'm good.
So if you take your vote again, do you want Joe to send a resume?
He doesn't have to. I'm just saying, you know, it's just, I think it's just good, good business to do it that way.
Has anything changed between you two gentlemen since the last time we met?
Both want to be on, we both want to be on the committee.
Again, as long as they tell me when their meetings are, if.
Well, again, we both want it. It's not, we both want to do it, it's, we both want to do it, but one, if Joe gets appointed, then I have to go through the process of trying to get appointed by either the selectman or the school committee, I think.
Vice versa.
And I'll know more on Thursday is our our school committee meeting. This Thursday, we're, that is on our agenda, too, so.
Again, I feel, like I say, I'm experienced enough with commercial building, commercial buildings, and the project managers on commercial buildings, and the construction side, the dirt side, you know.
Yeah, the dirt.
Yeah, the dirt and and the building side, but we're getting my hands dirty, so.
Nothing's changed with me. I want to, you know, I want to go with me. I think I gave my reasons last time. I think Joe Austin, I answered that. If you want to know my experience, that's fine, too.
No, right.
Forty years of professional engineer, I designed building institute, I was a project manager, the design manager for largest public works project in Canada. You know, I've done, you know, projects that are way bigger than this. I've been design manager on, I've had to deal with contractors in, you know, all through from from conceptual design all the way through the end of construction. So I'll put my experience up against anybody that's that's in town Milford in terms of this type of work. So I think, you know, I think I would be a valuable resource, and also, I think I can help make sure that beyond that, that the the building meets the the needs of the town, which is the same as I think I said to Joe last week when he had asked that question.
Right.
It's a pleasure of the board.
Let me ask a question.
Sure.
Babe, were you involved in Milford High School, the original?
No.
No, okay. What are your thoughts about the Milford High School? I mean, is that a, is that a building that can be renovated, or can we improve on that building?
Most certainly can, I'm sure of that.
Because I keep hearing, I know everybody kind of slips, that everybody's expecting this $400 million building, and it doesn't have to be there, because, I mean, we can, we can work with what we have.
To interject quickly, that's what that...
I know there's a feasibility study, so I get that. But they're going to look for input also.
Yes.
And I'm all for saving money. I mean, I don't, I don't see this town growing very much, and I don't see that many students coming up. I mean, once we make some political changes.
I guess, if you told that to the school committee a year ago, they'd probably tell you, you're nuts. How many news lasts in the last five years?
But then the other thing, when I was going to school, I mean, there was 25, 28 kids in the classroom, so I don't know what it is today. It's probably not that.
Well, I mean, I, you know, not that I'm for or against, classroom discussion is outside of that, but I mean, the state requirements are such, you know, you're sort of, you're sort of hamstrung with those issues to a certain extent.
And we are, exactly. You know, the state's going to guide us along, and then the building committee is going to kind of ask and answer questions that are pertaining to Milford and from that standpoint. And that's why, you know, it's important that we follow that pathway, and that we take votes that are on agendas and things like that. So that's why we're here revisiting that, because, again, we're just, we, we as the school committee, just, you know, we want to make sure we don't hit any other stumbling blocks, or hit any stumbling blocks. We haven't hit any, and we're getting everything in order now, as the timeline comes upon us. So, again, we are, again, making sure that each step that we're taking right now is done the appropriate way.
You did, first of all, you've cut down, the last time I was on the school building committee, there was like 22.
Right, yeah.
22 members, it was ridiculous.
Oh, man.
Yeah, so, forget it. We're at 50.
Yeah.
We want to be...
Somebody make a motion.
I mean, both of you gentlemen are extremely well-qualified with, to the extent that I know you both, you know, in, with different expertises kind of coming, coming to the table, although they certainly, your expertises certainly overlap. And frankly, I'm hard-pressed to... Babe, you made it easy last time.
I feel that there's dynamics in play, so.
Again, we go the same way. So I'll take, I'll roll the dice the other way.
You sure?
Yeah. I could, I went crazy once, he can go crazy this time.
Then, in that event, and thank you for that courtesy, Mr. Minini, appreciate it, I would nominate, or propose that we nominate. What's the wording I want to use?
A point.
A point, thank you. Not nominate, I knew it wasn't nominate. Appoint Joe Caligione to be the planning board representative to this high school building committee.
I'll second that.
We moved in second, we appoint Joe as high school building committee representative from the planning board. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, unanimous of five. All right. That's it?
A letter from Boeing.
Oh, yeah. Saw that, read it. Move to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
It's quite fine. It's a, it's a requirement of the, of the water department to ask.
Yeah.
But there's no, that fulfills their option, that fulfills their requirement. It's entirely up to you guys if you want to move forward with it or not.
I think you would, you would have gone through and started to do the overlay that would represent, did you not?
I, so...
That's what I'm trying to find out.
No, right. So it, I mean, I did, I did lay out where it was going to be in general.
That's before we got into changing everything, Stone, Godfrey Brook, wellfields.
Right.
How we go on a different route in terms of how we adopt the map, and how we amend the zoning bylaw. It should be easier to address this issue again, and we can look at it for the fall if you like.
Yeah, if you want, if you want...
I'll leave that up to the chairman, but I think, I mean, based on the fact that the, you know, state requires us to do this to a certain extent, it would, and I'm sick and tired of getting letters from the Boeing Water Department to a certain extent.
Well, you got them once a year.
Yeah, I would, I would think we should look at it and finally, you know, we were just about ready to do it, and then Godfrey Brook, we said, let's get that done, let's get that through. We were going to do it. I would say, let's finish it off, and let's try to put it on the, on the...
I was going to say, the fall agenda would be the...
Yeah.
And we've already started to eat into it up at the Far Northwest.
Right.
Some of that's already in the WR one.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, we'll do it in the fall.
Yeah, that would be a good topic for the fall.
Yeah, I think if, as we looked at it before, like Maple Street would be, Maple Street down to Beaver Street would be the theme, because the, let's say, the easterly side of, easterly side of Maple Street is either wetlands are already developed, and the westerly side is the only place that you could actually do something. So if we had to, and that, the easterly side would be on their, on their protection area. So I think, yeah, I think we could come up with something fairly...
If you didn't do all of their area, then you would still get the letter. So if, if you felt as though you wanted to exclude a portion of the, of the zone two from your zone two, then you're, I'm just letting, it doesn't matter to me, but you're still going to get the letter.
Okay.
Right, you get a letter as long as D P doesn't, as long as they can find it in the area.
An area that isn't covered. No, but I mean, right now, I don't think, I would draw it up, Liz, when you have, you know, when you have time and stuff, based on where it is, and then, I don't think there's a reason why we would have to exclude any, again, it's going to be a minor development area, and it's, it's not a huge, it doesn't, it doesn't stop anybody from developing to most extent, so. It's more the time that you and Larry have had to deal with and stuff, which I think is, it does all in the pain and move forward with it.
Move to adjourn?
Moved in second, and we adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous of five. Good evening.
Thank you, Dave. Goodbye. Goodbye.
Goodbye.